That we're all familiar with if you've ever dealt with contractors, well, honest ones, called change orders. Change order A follows the change order Z, and now we have the Bay Bridge originally bid at 1.2 billion is now pushing 7 billion through change orders and just a few bolts of problem. The CEO, the real legal problem is that the CEO of the High Speed Rail Authority appears to have changed the rules in the bidding process. Let me turn to the audience. The original rules as passed on March of 1st of 2012 said that all five qualified bidders would submit two separate bids. First were their technical capabilities and second were their competition by price. That the first round of analysis would go only to the three most qualified technically. Therefore, you would never see the bid price of the final two. That is a board resolution. Sometime, well sometime, August of last year, somehow in buried in 114-page memorandum, they absconded or got rid of the whole issue of technical memorandum. So that the lowest qualified therefore, and also the lowest bidder, Tudor Perini, won the job. Tudor Perini should never have done it in the second round, according to the board. Now, the board has stood square, you can see some wobblys, I was in Sacramento last week and there were some uncomfortable board members. However, Chairman Dan Richard got up and praised the CEO Jeff Morales. I have filed with the United States Congress, with the US Congress, an eight-page detailed memorandum that shows that not only did the CEO of the High Speed Rail Authority violate the authority's own rules, the authority is created under the Public Utilities Commission, which defines the role of the chairman and CEO very narrowly. They do not have the broad powers that other state agencies have. And that clearly, the CEO and probably the chairman and maybe one other board member, Mike Rossi, have violated the PUC law in doing what they did to make Tudor Perini the winner. It's unclear who gave them that permission, but I think at least one, if not two, board members, perhaps unknowingly, but they're playing hanging tough again because the governor's got their back. Fifth on the agenda of Naughties during the last month is that CART, California's Advocating Responsible Rail Design, a group of three very bright ladies in Palo Alto, showed that apparently the $985 million that Tudor Perini bid for the first 30 miles is actually only going to build 24 miles of it and of the Central Valley. And these 24 miles will have none of the following. It will not have electrification, which all high-speed rail runs on. It will not have any grade separation. It will probably not even have rails. We used to call it the no train to nowhere. And then they began to admit that they could not afford either electrification locomotives or passenger cars. Now we have to just call it not even the rail bed, it's not even a rail bed, it's no rail bed to nowhere. Actually, I also got a memo today that says they're not even building access roads to go under or over or through the Central Valley project. The sixth item is that in January of this year, actually the day I was with him, January 15th in Washington DC, Jeff Denham, Congressman from the Central Valley, was appointed Chairman of the Rail Subcommittee, Rail Pipelines and Hazardous Materials Subcommittee of the House of Representatives. Mr. Denham, who is from the Central Valley, is holding a hearing on the California High Speed Rail Project on the 28th of May. I'm going down for the Follies, you might want to come down too. It shall be interesting. It is generally not a very friendly audience, unlike their board meetings, which are love fest. Seventh item is that, I'll call it our suit, technically known as TOS Fukuda in Kings County versus the California High Speed Rail Authority, often in the press called the Prop 1A suit. We go to trial on the 31st of May. The Attorney General responded to our March 15th case filings with such weak material that I actually went on vacation for two weeks in South Carolina. It wasn't really worth responding or taking my time. They were using old material that we had already rebutted very seriously. The ruling from that hearing, because there are two parts, there's one part called a writ mandamus and the other part calls a 526A, and I'll leave it to Bill to try to explain all that to you. The writ mandamus is lawyer A saying, we need to interpret the law this way, lawyer B saying, we need to interpret the law that way. That will be heard probably only, that heard on the 31st of May, and we expect that decision to take about two months because the judge that we have, Judge Kenny, is reputed to be honest, let's hope, and reputed to be very cautious and careful in his rulings. He is under enormous political pressure because if he rules against this project, the state will lose $3 billion, which in the game of high-speed rail, is a rounding error. The state will lose that money and the governor will lose face. Thank you very much, I'll take a question or two.
Jerry?
It's a joyful day, but...
The other thing that I thought was interesting in the letters that Two Arrows wrote was the fact that there is no agreement yet.
There's nothing, there's not even a discussion.
Which is contrary to what's been said before.
It's one of the old adages, how do you know politicians are lying, they're moving their lips. So, sorry, this group's been stolen.
Thank you.
Shall I leave you?
You're non-politicians.
You're citizen servants, yes, that's right. Unpaid at that. Oh, incidentally, Mr. Morales, CEO of the High Speed Rail Authority, part of the bragging rights that he has is that the Tudor Perini bid of 985 million to go 24 miles with none of the following is below the 1.4 billion that the authority had estimated that first 30 miles would cost. Therefore, he gets a salary bonus. Now, is that for writing your own ticket? This thing smells, guys.
William, that's just amazing. The amount of work that you have put in, the amount of time, it's just...
We are very fortunate. The strategy of people like the authority is just to wear down volunteer and citizen group. They are spending, ready, $1 million a working day. A million of your bucks a day go into paper and public relations. And they have been at this now for, since 1996. So far, they have spent, and spent that rate, except for the last four fiscal years, so far, they've spent close to $1 billion, 825 million as the last closing I could find. So they've already blown nearly a billion. They're about to try to blow another six billion, excuse me, they've already blown a billion, about to try to blow another six billion. If you took that $7 billion, you could have educated 250,000 students in the Cal State University with free tuition and fees for four years. Taxpayers, job creators, benefactors, and, you know, contributing to their state. And all we have done with that billion dollars so far is produce piles of paper that in my estimate are C-minus grade. It's a political process out of control. You want to know how I really feel about it?
So...
Yeah, I say I'm going up...
Will open up for the public to say, ask anything, you know? This is more of a presentation rather than a public comment, does any member of the public... We're going to continue opening up for public comments, so maybe you might have a question or two.
It's okay.
It's okay?
Yeah, it's mind-boggling, it is details.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we are still in public comment, if there are any other members of the public who'd like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda tonight? Yes? Come forward.
Good evening, John Vergero, Stockford Avenue. I want to quickly just use a little of my time. First of all, myself and the good Lieutenant, and I'm sure Shirley Carlson knows why the flag's in outmas, because of the officers killed in the line of duty. And Shirley's uncle, I worked with, Charles Corelli, many times, and of course, the Lieutenant works every day for us. In fact, I had one of my partners, Brian McDonald, was killed by a bomb at the Park Police Station in 1970, and they just celebrated the 40-some years that he's been killed. Anyway, also, item number 21, I'd like to see moved up further because some of us are older people and we can't get home in the dark. And item 21, we'd be appreciative it was raised, moved up on the agenda.
Me?
Or me?
I think that our agenda is set at this time, that's appreciated. We're going to try to move through the agenda quickly now. We had, you know, a number of presentations, so...
And I have approximately a minute left, I'd like to donate it to Mr. Paponas.
Well, I'm not sure that we can do that, but Lou, you can come speak. Thank you. Thank you.
Lou Paponas, McBane Avenue, I'll make it very short. I would like to second that motion that John presented. If you could possibly move item 21 up, great deal, because it turns out that 90% of the time, when you leave important things like this to the last minute, you don't have anybody here, a one or two people that are interested. So if you could be kind enough to move it up, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public, and actually, that is not on the agenda, that is wanting to speak on items not on the agenda? Okay? So we will close public comment and go on to item number five, report out of closed session, we'll let our city attorney give it a tour.
Madam Mayor, the City Council met in closed session to discuss the, I'm going to forget the exact language, because I'll screw it up if I don't. The Public Employee Performance Evaluation of the City Manager pursuant to a Government Code section, there was no action taken.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number six, the City Manager's Report. City Manager, would you like to give your report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, you have the written report before you with just a couple of notes. You have not yet received any reimbursement from the POTUS visit that we submitted the invoices for. We did receive a letter back from the DNC saying thanks but no thanks, contact the Secret Service, maybe they'll pay you. And then we received feedback from a resident that we sent half the invoice to with some Q and A and sent that information back to them. On April 29th, the Police Chief attended the School Safety Summit held at the Oracle Conference Center. There was a number of speakers reflecting a wide variety of interests and emphasis, both from the elected and appointed ranks. There may be some funding, this possibly for school resource officers, and we'll keep our eyes on that as it moves along.
This was in response to the Sandy Hook massacre?
Yes.
Okay, and it's a regional summit?
Regional summit, yes. Staff received some electronic correspondence from a resident on items 16 and 18, and that was presented to the full council as well. Happy to answer any other questions the council may have regarding the City Manager's report, but also a request on the consent agenda, that item 14, the banner policy be removed with consent and moved to the regular agenda, so we can talk about that in a little more detail.
Do any members of the council have any comments for the City Manager's report? Any members of the public? Okay. We'll move on to item number seven, which is Clean Roundtable Organization Report, we have no report on that. We'll move on to item number eight, which is 1815, which is the Consent Calendar. Are there any items that any council member would like to pull other than item number 14 that the City Managers are reporting?
What's our calendar?
Yes.
I would like to pull number 13.
Okay.
That's it. Oh, and I have a comment on number 12. I spoke with the City Manager about it, and I can just make it at the end if you'd like.
Um...
It's just a comment, it's not a, it's just a comment that could be considered to be put into the report, but I do think that, given where we are with our neighbors to both the east and to the north of us, that I would think that, you know, Spanish-speaking, bilingual officers, you know, are a must really. And as we're doing our recruiting, I would implore the City Manager and the Chief to consider making that a requirement, as opposed to an option. Many private companies recruit regularly for bilingual, has that as a requirement, it doesn't cost them any extra. You know, I fired a number of people that are bilingual and not paying a premium. I know that we do, because our contract has us do that, and that's fine, it's a reasonable amount. But it, I think that that should be a requirement for us, a high requirement for us, and put into the job spec, so thank you very much for listening.
Any other council member? I have an item on the Consent Calendar for this session. Any members of the public have any items on the Consent Calendar, items number eight through 15, other than items number 13 and 14 that they'd like to comment on or pull? Seeing none, I just have a quick comment on the approval of the minutes to clarify in the minutes that were talked about, item 10 being pulled and discussed before the Consent Calendar was approved, that it was actually put back into the Consent Calendar and approved within the Consent Calendar approval motion. Just a technical that I didn't catch until late this afternoon. And then items 13 and 14, so can I call for a motion to approve the Consent Calendar, items eight through 15, except items 13 and 14?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on, we go into our public hearings, we have none tonight. And our regular agenda, item number 16, is regarding public input, regarding information on upcoming contract negotiations, Atherton Police Officers Association. And the City Manager has a report, I'd like to have him here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to make the report here so we can show the staff report up on the screen for those of you out there.
Thank you.
Put it on the desktop.
Yes.
On the back, do this for you.
Yes.
Okay. So the objective of this particular...
They want you to register yourself with.
Later.
You're working with unregistered software?
Oh, no. That's got to be some violation something.
This is game tape.
The City of, as the council and community may know, the City of Menlo Park hosted a public comment process pursuant to their public input and outreach for labor negotiations. Menlo Park staff brought forward an informational presentation in advance of the upcoming labor negotiations to provide the public an opportunity to be informed and provide input before the negotiations. So, we heard from members of the community and a couple members of the council that that might be something that Atherton might wish to do, so that's what we're here this evening to do, is take public comments, and only public comments with respect to the upcoming labor negotiations, and provide some information to the community in that regard. So the town has one established bargaining unit, the Atherton Police Officers Association. Lou, am I talking close enough and loud enough for you? Lou? Am I talking close enough and loud enough for you?
That's fine.
Cool. The Atherton Police Officers Association, they represent the majority of sworn and non-s sworn members of the Atherton Police Department. The remainder of the staff are classified as unrepresented. Within the Atherton Police Department, there are three members that are not part of the APOA, that's the Police Chief, the Lieutenant, and the Executive Secretary. A singular salary and medical resolution adopted by the City Council governs salaries and benefits of the unrepresented staff. The resolution for these staff is effective July 1st and was adopted by the council in early 2013. Following chart, which you can see here, shows the numbers of employees, there are a total of 34, shows the ones that are within the APOA, and those that are unrepresented, and then myself, which is an employment contract. Like most local governments, the agencies, the most local government agencies, the town is a service-oriented agency. The highest single annual cost to the town is the cost of personnel services to provide those services. The direct costs, salaries, and benefits for the above, in that table represents 51.2% of the town's general fund operating expenses. In numbers, in 2012-13, the budget allocates about $10.7 million to the general fund operating expenses, covering all nine departmental areas. The direct costs, salaries, and benefits for the above 34 staff represents 5.5, roughly $5.5 million. In terms of a breakdown, City Council, as we heard earlier this evening, are public servants and they're unpaid. So that's our lowest salary and benefit direct cost. Administration, there are three administration, three full-time employees, direct cost $483,000. The City Attorney is a contract, so it's no direct personnel cost. Finance has three employees, direct personnel cost $420,000. Planning is a contract, no personnel cost. Building Department, we have half-time staff in there, as well as some other overhead, that's about $106,000. Non-departmental or interdepartmental costs, there's no personnel within that department. The Police Department, which is the bulk of our personnel cost, 25 employees, $4.8 million. In Public Works, two and a half employees, $137,000. Over the last several years, the town has implemented several strategic changes that mitigate increased personnel costs. The first was a transition of contract staff for appropriate functions within the Building and Public Works departments. The second was the implementation of the unrepresented salary staff and benefit presentation, which we just did in 1213, 2013. In 2008, the town had a total of 54 staff spread across five departments. Since that time, staffing levels have been reduced by 37%. And presently, the town has a staff of 34 spread across five departments. For a cost comparison, in 2008, the direct cost for staff onboard at that time, to 54 employees, was $7 million, with a comparable general fund operating expense of $10 million. This represented a direct staffing cost of 69.7, whereas today, it's 52.
51.
51.2. These reductions, of course, were not without impact both on human capital and service levels. The town appreciates the efforts made by these staff in the community to address service level delivery expectations moving forward. Given the table above, the value of a 1% increase in compensation to the town's single bargaining unit is about $48,000. Other factors are also considered with respect to salary and benefit negotiations. Part of the town's financial cost analysis has to include pension and other post-employment obligations. Town's a member of the California Public Employees Retirement System. We do not participate in Social Security, so we don't have to pay it on part of the town, the employees don't pay on part of the employees, but they do pay at least the local miscellaneous staff their 7% contribution. The CalPERS pension system is the only retirement pension benefit system provided to the town employees. Within the CalPERS pension system, agencies can select a benefit plan for its local safety employees, the town selected 3% and 50% as the retirement plan. The plan provides the following key benefit provisions, a benefit formula, 3% and 50%, no Social Security coverage, final average compensation is the highest 12 months, provides non-industrial disabilities, standard industrial disability pre-retirement debt benefits, and a post-retirement debt benefit of a lump sum of $500, and an annual, once in retirement, cost of living adjustment of up to 2%. Benefits accumulated within the CalPERS retirement program are transferable from employer to employer only within the CalPERS system, or systems of reciprocity are not portable outside the system. The benefit levels are employer-based, meaning that employers have different benefit levels, and each is only liable for the costs associated with the time the employee spent within their organization at that particular pension benefit level. Atherton's benefit level is 3% and 50%, that means that a public safety employee can retire from the CalPERS system after the five-year required vesting period at age 50. For example, taking a typical police officer that might have started with the Atherton Police Department at age 30, and they've worked in Atherton for 25 years, at the highest annual salary that officer could receive today, the retirement formula works by multiplying the years of service with Atherton, times the benefit rate, times the annual salary. So for 25 years, 3% benefit rate, $101,000, the annual retirement would be $76,000. Again, that officer has to work here for 25 years to get that benefit. Regardless of where the employee eventually retires from, the town is only liable for the amount of time that the employee worked in the town of Atherton. For current employees that are eligible for healthcare, the employee must actually retire from CalPERS and Atherton concurrently in order to receive that healthcare benefit in retirement. While the employee is working for Atherton, Atherton is funding the employer component of the retirement benefit based on the employer rate set by CalPERS. The current rate for Atherton for public safety staff is 27.877% of their salary. There are several components to that rate, there's the net normal cost, which is 17.8%, a payment based on amortization basis, that's something CalPERS does as part of their formula based on the rate, the 3% and 50 formula, that's 7.3%. And benefit surcharges, such as a death benefit, lump sum death benefit, industrial benefits, 2.7%. CalPERS adjusts those rates annually and does an actuarial evaluation on the town every year. In 2012, the town rate was 39.919%. The rate was significantly reduced when the town paid off its unfunded actuarial liability. We paid 1.2 or so million dollars toward that lump sum in fiscal year 2012. CalPERS has advised that beginning in 2015, they begin phasing in a five-year increase to employer rates to address funding gaps within plans. Town's plan is approximately 85% funded. It's anticipated that the rate increase beginning in 2015 will look like the following table here. So in 2014-15, our rate would be 29.7, and then in 2019-2020, the rate would be 35.2.
George, if I could just interject, just to be clear, in 2012, our rate from CalPERS was about 40%, 39.9%.
Correct.
And it is currently in 2013, or yeah, 2013-2014, 27.8.
Correct.
So it went down by, do my math for me, 12%, 13%, 12% because of the reduction in force and the new actuarial that we have done.
It went down because paid off the unfunded actuarial.
We paid off, sorry, the 1.2 in the second.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, that was a surcharge added to that base rate.
I see.
CalPERS is going to increase it 1.1 percentage points each year for five years, beginning in 2014-15, for an integrated of about 35.2, and that's in an attempt by CalPERS to close the funding gap from our 85% funded level, to try to get us 100% funded within a 30-year funding horizon. OPAP's liabilities?
George, I think, did you?
No, I'm...
You're welcome.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Yeah. George, I know that we've been advised that the rates are going up, and I assume that these are what we're anticipating, as you said. I've read that the rate increase could be as much as 50%. So I assume that we're taking conservative view, or...
No, this is directly from CalPERS. It's not a 50% rate increase, it was an analysis that some rates could go up by as much as 50%, but it's 1.1 percentage points each time over five years.
Okay. All right, thank you.
OPAP liabilities, or the other post-employment liabilities, are the direct result of post-employment benefits paid by the town to employees. For Atherton, this liability is connected directly to the healthcare benefits that are provided into retirement. The unfunded actuarial accrued liability for those healthcare benefits is about $7.7 million, and represents a combination of future costs for current employees as well as already retired employees. Of that $7.7 million, roughly $5 million or so, is directly connected to already retired staff that are receiving health benefits in their retirement paid by the town. The other $2 million is currently on the books for current employees that are eligible for that benefit, that will receive it should they retire directly from the town of Atherton and CalPERS concurrently. For Atherton, this liability is connected directly to the healthcare benefits that are provided into retirement. The unfunded actuarial accrued liability for those healthcare benefits is about seven point seven million dollars and represents a combination of future costs for current employees, as well as already retired employees. Of that seven point seven million, roughly five million or so, is directly connected to already retired staff that are receiving health benefits in their retirement, paid by the town. The other two million dollars is currently on the books for current employees that are eligible for that benefit, that will receive it should they retire directly from the town of Atherton and CalPERS concurrently. Actually, I just read that part of it.
The arc?
The arc, yeah, thank you. The annual required contribution for the town is about five hundred and eighty-three thousand. That's factored into all of the departmental costs within each departmental budget. A long-term liability has about a twenty-six-year remaining amortization period. That's the seven point seven million. The town can elect to pay additional amounts toward that liability if it so chooses. The MMBA, the Mayor's Milious Brown Act, governs all, not the other Brown Act.
Myers.
Myers.
Myers, Milious.
governs all aspects of labor management relations in local government. It's applicable in one form or another to all cities, counties, and most special districts. It provides the right to organize and sets guidelines for such things as a scope of representation and the requirement to meet and confer in good faith. That's part of what the town will be doing as we meet and confer with the Atherton Police Officers Association. The scope of representation is all matters related to employment, conditions, employer-employee relations, including but not limited to wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment. The Atherton Police Officers Association is a recognized employee organization or bargaining unit. It is not a town-sponsored organization, nor is it regulated by the town or city council. It retains all the rights, responsibilities, and obligations of such an organization as provided under state and federal law. The town has an obligation to meet and confer in good faith with the APOA regarding wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment. City manager serves as the town's chief negotiating officer, and while the manager may delegate the authority, in Atherton's case, I retain that authority. Negotiations for a new agreement typically commence prior to the expiration of any existing MOU, and the current MOU expires in September of 2015. During negotiations, negotiation teams will meet together, discuss the various issues and interests in the new contract. Proposals are exchanged relating to issues presented. Tentative agreements are often reached, but those agreements must be ratified by both the APOA membership and the city council in open session. If negotiations do not result in a tentative agreement on a new contract, impasse procedures may be invoked by either party, and will then proceed to mediation as an impasse procedure. If mediation assists the parties in reaching the agreement, it's still contingent upon ratification. But there's something new. AB 646 provides that before we can impose any contract, or the town could oppose any contract, we must go through a fact-finding process. And the APOA is not subject to binding interest arbitration, so this fact-finding process would be a part of it. Previously, if the parties reached an impasse and had exhausted every possible discussion, public agency had the opportunity to unilaterally impose its last best and final offer. However, fact-finding has added additional layers of time, complexity, and of course, expense. Undeniable changes include the agency must hold a public hearing on the impasse. The written, non-binding findings of fact and recommended terms of settlement must be imposed by a fact-finding issue, sorry, by a fact-finding panel, and the agency is prohibited from imposing its last best and final offer until certain time criteria are met. It is clear, one thing's clear, fact-finding, if requested by the bargaining unit, increases costs, the need for resources, and the time associated with the bargaining process. It remains the goal of both parties, the APOA and the city, the town, to reach a negotiated agreement. Peppera is another wrinkle. The passage of AB 340, along with some cleanup language, enacted what's known as the Public Employees Pension Reform Act, effective January thirteenth. Local government agencies that are part of CalPERS are subject to limits for pension benefits offered to new employees, and increased flexibility for employee and employer cost sharing for those employees. Because the most significant savings is only realized when new members are hired, short savings are limited, but in the long term, it creates significant savings for agencies. The 2013 labor negotiations, we anticipate negotiations to begin earnest in late May. We've already met once so far, just to talk about ground rules. We are waiting for this public input process to really begin meeting earnest. As mentioned previously, the town has already adopted a salary and benefit resolution for unrepresented employees. Through this resolution, the town enacted the following policy objectives. We transferred one hundred percent of the pension liability for the employee share to the employee. We eliminated town-paid retiree healthcare for all new employees by establishing a cafeteria healthcare plan. We established that cafeteria healthcare plan for all current new hires with caps for the town's benefit contributions. We adopted the requirements of AB 340, implementing a tier-two retirement plan with lesser retirement benefits. And we established caps on leave benefits. That's already been implemented, starts January first, or July first, 2013, for all unrepresented staff. Because unrepresented staff do not have a bargaining unit, and the salary and benefits resolution doesn't represent an MOU, the resolution is reviewed annually by the city council. An MOU contract with the APOA is anticipated to be a multi-year agreement. The principal components of determining our compensation here, we're going to look at fiscal condition of the town, the city council's policy decisions, preservation of the town's competitiveness as an employer to the extent possible. The fiscal condition of the town will include the town's ability to identify, control, and fund present and future liabilities with respect to employee pension obligations and other post-employment benefits. City council policy discussions and decisions will include prior policy objectives for addressing salary and benefit costs and savings. And the preservation of the town's competitiveness as an employer will include an analysis of the impact of any decision on the town's ability to recruit and retain quality staff. That includes the staff report. Again, this is informational for the council, and we're gathering public input from the community.
Do you have the organizational chart?
I do. This is the town's organizational chart. I did leave somebody off the bottom there, our code enforcement services officer from CSG. That's a contract position as well. But as you look at the chart, any dashed line represents a contract service that's delivered to the community, and any solid line represents a full-time employee working for the town.
Thank you very much, city manager. I will open this up for public comments at this time. Please limit your comments to three minutes. This is the time for public comments on this issue. We wanted to hold this public input and information meeting for the public to have an opportunity to understand the process. And I think the city manager did a great job of going through the process of how we are going to be handling the negotiations. So I'll open it up for public comments at this time. Yes, come right ahead.
Honorable mayor and members of the council, Malcolm Dudley, 51 Catelper Drive. We've had a long history of negotiating with.